I'm going to call this meeting the Oskaloosa City Council to order. Today is July 7, 2014. Let's start with the invocation by Pastor Steve Cox, Bethel Baptist Church. I don't believe he's here, so would you bow your heads with me? Heavenly Father, as we assemble here tonight, we thank you for the blessing we have of being part of this community together in Oskaloosa. We recognize your blessing comes with responsibility. And so our prayer is that each of us would be granted a humble spirit in all our deliberations, giving due consideration to the trust that citizens have given us. Please grant us wisdom, honesty, integrity, and high purpose. May the words of our mouths and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable in your sight. Amen.
Amen.
Charlie, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call, please.
Caliguri?
Here.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
First Day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council, and ask to keep statements brief. The time shall be limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions are to be asked of the city staff, council members, or the mayor prior to speaking to the full council, so that way concerns can be properly researched and answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anyone who would care to speak at this time? Seeing none, we will move on. Next item is the consent agenda. These are all items that are routine in nature, various minutes and reports from meetings, payment of claims, various applications for liquor licenses, et cetera. So anyway, do we have a motion for approval? Okay. Any discussion?
It is.
Roll call, please.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
First Day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item six is the announcement of vacancies that we have on various boards and commissions. Only one, the Building Code Board of Appeals. There are two vacancies to fill, and it's upon appointment to serve at the pleasure of the mayor. It's a five-member board that meets as needed. Currently, we have three males serving with two vacancies. Item number seven gets into the regular agenda. Item A is a presentation on the anticipated impact of the Emerald Ash Bore on the city of Oskaloosa. There's a lengthy explanation here, but I bet Dylan will give us that anyway. So Dylan, if you would, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Again, I'm Dylan Wolfinger, management analyst here at City Hall. The purpose of this presentation tonight is to explain the Emerald Ash Bore problem, how it will affect Oskaloosa, the budget that will most likely be required, and the staff's plan to deal with the issue. Emerald Ash Bore is a metallic green beetle. It's native to Asia. It came to the United States most likely on wood pallets, landed near Detroit, and spread throughout the Midwest. It's expected that it came in 2002. The way the beetle affects ash trees is that the beetle tunnels into the ash tree and lays eggs. Once these eggs are laid, larvae grows and it eats through the tree, which cuts off the ability for it to transport nutrients, which stuns the growth and ultimately kills the Once an ash tree has been infected, it will show dramatic tree loss after five years. You can see on the left, the picture shows the inside of an infected ash tree. Then you can see on the right, there's a tree showing growth that's trying to combat the larvae as it cuts off the nutrients to the top of the tree. So if you've ever seen a tree like that, it's definitely having some problems. Communities with an Emerald Ash Bore infection will actually see a loss of trees after 10 years. The picture shows an EAB infestation that targets just the ash trees. So how does this affect the area that we are currently in? Iowa's actually under an ash tree quarantine as of 2014 in February, and this is actually when Emerald Ash Bore was spotted in Eddyville. They actually had a confirmed case of it. They found the bug and the larva. So this gives us a significant chance that the bug is either coming to Oskaloosa or actually already here. The current outlook for ash trees within the community, staff looked over a 1995 tree inventory, and it showed roughly 135 ash trees within the three quadrants. The fourth one was not completed in this study. A 2014 survey showed 35 ash trees in quadrant one. We recently did this with some of our staff, and it showed that the average diameter of the trees in this quadrant was 23 inches. So the plan in itself is based on three things for the Emerald Ash Bore, what city staff has come up with. Number one, the removal. Number two, replanting. Number three, updating the code. In order to ensure the safety of residents, city staff is working to be proactive with Emerald Ash Bore in removing the trees. This plan includes removing the least desirable trees first. We did this basing it off of certain criteria that we set, mostly the condition of the tree, the location under power lines, as in like hanging over the street and things like that, and the distance to the curb or sidewalk. Additional reasons that we need to remove these trees include that dead and dying trees actually attract more pest. The trees are not aesthetically pleasing. They actually look quite ugly. The branches are more prone to fall, and a dead tree is more likely to fall. So what is the cost that we're predicting here? It's estimated that it's going to cost the city around $175,000 to remove the trees in the right-of-way and Edmondson Park. Average cost for a tree removal is around $800, $1,200 a tree. The number of trees removed each year will depend on funding. As we said earlier in our budget session, we set aside $15,000 in fiscal year 15. That $15,000 does not actually include any replanting cost. The removal of each tree will include stump grinding, filling the whole topsoil, and with the replanting program, replanting a new tree. Removal will be done through contractors and city staff. The replanting program that staff hopes to develop will offer a new tree to people who lose one in the city right-of-way. The estimates of this program are around $10,000. The city will encourage the replanting of trees on private property instead of the right-of-way. We believe that this is a good idea because leaving the right-of-way open allows for ease of access to utilities, prevents damage to sidewalks and roadways, lessens the debris in the streets and in our stormwater systems. And currently, staff is faced with removing trees on Third Avenue East in the right-of-way for utility improvements. If you drive down there, that's something we hope to prevent in the future. The tree replacement program will allow for residents to request a new tree planted in neither their private property or a city park, and that is the residents that are directly affected by Emerald Ash Bore, the ones that we will be removing a tree in their right-of-way. And the city will work with community groups to apply for grants to hopefully offset some of the costs of this replanting. Replanting program is necessary because trees create a desirable neighborhood look. The shade creates lower energy bills for most houses, and trees show multiple environmental The last thing that we focus on in the plan is upgrading the tree ordinance. Updates are needed to prevent another problem similar to Emerald Ash Bore. Updates include placing ash trees on the prohibited tree list, preventing the planting of trees in the right-of-way, setting standard distance from curbs and sidewalks of planting future trees, discouraging tree topping as it is no longer a best practice, and encouraging the planting of multiple species in trees. So in summary, like I said, it's based off of three things: remove the trees from the right-of-way to prevent any damages that can come from the Emerald Ash Bore, replant trees to ensure a healthy ecosystem, and update the tree ordinance to prevent future loss. Attached at the end of this presentation, you'll find some helpful documents, one on how to identify the ash tree and another on how to identify Emerald Ash Bore. I thank you for your time and encourage any questions that you might have.
You do a nice job, Dylan. There's a lot of information here, a lot of good stuff. You mentioned in here that if we have a tree in someone's right-of-way, and so that tree is removed, then there would be some cooperation with the property owner then as far as replacing that tree back a little further from the right-of-way. Do you anticipate that to be a cash payment, or would we have our own personnel involved with saying, "This is the tree we recommend, and we'll do the planning for you"? I mean, I guess I wonder how hands-on you would anticipate we would go with that.
From an approach of the city, I think we need to take a more hands-on approach to that because in order to diversify our species to prevent another Emerald Ash Bore or even the Dutch elm disease that took out a lot of trees, I think the city is looking and hoping that we can provide a lot of knowledge and a lot of help in locating the best fit for their tree and also the best type of tree. So it will be a more hands-on approach.
Okay. Okay. Is there any particular selection of trees that are being recommended at this point, like a half dozen different species, or is it wider than that?
We use a list from the DNR that I currently have that provides shade trees and also some lower trees. I know that we really, when we're identifying spots, we want to make sure, is this ideal for a shade tree or maybe a tree that isn't going to grow so high? And so we have a list that we're currently going to use as staff, and we'll be presenting that to people when we find either the best location for them or the type of tree.
Okay. Okay. And it sounds like the right-of-way is going to be our first priority, finding those that are close to power lines and then... So is there any other criteria being used or any kind of speed that you wanted to, like this year, we want to see 100 trees out? That's too high. But like maybe 20 trees or 30 at this point?
Currently, with the funding that was set aside, the best estimate is around 15 trees that we will be able to remove. I think if we amend the budget and increase that, it's really that I think our best bet would be to progressively advance in this. So start with smaller trees because we said we want to start with the worst and work our way up because they are going to be healthy for a little longer, and we want to make sure that we are still enjoying the tree for its life. So our best program is to take a little bit at a time and keep increasing each year.
Okay. Okay. So at that speed, we'd probably talk in maybe a 10- or 15-year project getting them all out, but the Emerald Ash Bore may encourage us to go a little faster than that.
That's correct. Once we see a removal of 15 this year, we can reevaluate how that's doing and maybe plan out for next year. Our initial plan is to go by each quadrant, take out the worst first because we rate it on a high, medium, and low in order to take those out. And we want to make sure we can take out our high ones first, work towards a medium, and then go to our lowest priority.
Okay. One last question, I guess. I hear advertisements from various tree services that say, "Yes, we can treat your ash tree for you." And so I would assume someone in the audience, presumably the watching audience, would say, "Well, would it be cheaper for the city of Oskaloosa to just somehow inoculate the trees as opposed to tearing them all down"?
We have looked into that. I've done quite a bit of research on that. Each time we look into it, it's not cost-effective. The Emerald Ash Bore will ultimately kill the tree. A lot of these things, they need to be applied each year, and that reoccurring cost is for the lifetime of the tree. It's never-ending. And so with that, there's also a lot of environmental issues with the chemicals that are going in the ground. If we were going to do it at our parks, this could cause some significant problems with people being around the trees. And also, it's not 100% effective. It's not guaranteed that if we were to use some of these methods to treat the tree, I guess you could say, it's not going to... There's a good chance that it wouldn't save the tree anyways.
Okay.
How about the square, Dylan? Have we surveyed it?
We have, and there are no ash trees in the square. There are a lot at Edmondson Park, but not at the square.
Any other questions? Very well done. Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you.
Okay. Consider a motion approving change order number three for a net decrease of $4,200 to assess liquidated damages for exceeding the allowable working days and change order number four for a net decrease of $7,725 to make final quantity adjustments to the West Area Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project. Let's see, the construction contract is finishing up with DeLong Construction. Construction contract price was revised to $507,050.90 with change orders number one and change order two. Proposed change order three is a decrease of $4,200 assessing liquidated damages for exceeding the allowable working days by seven days. Change order number four is a decrease of $7,725 to the contract amount adjusting for the final field quantities completed for the project. The change orders result in a final contract price of $495,125.90 after a net decrease of $3,545.60 from the original contract amount awarded at the August 5, 2013 city council meeting. So anyway, do we have a motion for approval of these two change orders and the decrease?
Remove.
Okay? Comment? Roll call.
Moore?
Yes.
First Day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item C. Considering a motion approving pay request number seven in the amount of $1,149.44 approving the retainage in the amount of $24,966.30 and accepting the completion of the West Area Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project by DeLong Construction. DeLong has completed the West Area Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project. The scope of the project included a new sanitary sewer pumping station, sewer piping and structures, and also the earthwork. Final contract amount for the project was $495,125.90 after the net decrease I mentioned earlier of $3,545.60 from the original contract amount. By city council approving this action, the West Area Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project will be accepted as complete. The retainage in the amount of $24,966.30 will only be released to the contractor 30 days after project acceptance if no claims have been filed against the project. The attached pay request for work on the Sanitary and Sewer Improvements Project has been reviewed by staff and is being recommended for payment, and they also recommend accepting the completion of the project, approving payment request number seven, and releasing the final retainage in 30 days. Do we have a motion supporting that?
Remove.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mayor and Council, the only other item that would be related to this would be, obviously, the project is complete. We're happy about that, and the work product turned out nice. We, on the administrative side, will still have to pass an ordinance assessing hookup fees. So in the event that someone develops out in this area which would be served by the sewer, the city would actually recover the cost of putting in the sewer itself. So working on that now with Garden Associates and should have that completed in the near future.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call.
Hookup fees will be higher than anyplace else or different than anyplace else? Is that what you're saying?
It would be representative of the cost to complete the project. So like the Nazarene church, that area, there's a hookup fee, I believe, for water and sewer, $2,500 for water, $2,500 for sewer, something like that, per acre. This one would be higher than that, but not by a significant amount from just the preliminary estimates.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
First Day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item D. Is considering a motion approving change order number one. It's a net decrease of $38,539.27 to the contract amount for the final quantity adjustments to the C Avenue East and North Third Street pavement rehabilitation project. The construction contract for that was awarded to Norris Asphalt Paving for a contract price of $765,365 at the September 3, 2013 city council meeting. Change order number one that's being proposed is a decrease of $38,539.27 to the contract amount to adjust for final field quantities completed for the project. The change order results in a final contract price of $726,825.73 after the decrease of $38,539.27 from the original contract amount awarded at the September 3, 2013 city council meeting. So there's a breakdown of the various dollars involved. Do we have a motion for approval of this? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
First Day?
Okay, that passes. Item E. Is consider a motion approving pay request number four in the amount of $7,757.75 approving the retainage in the amount of $36,341.29 and accepting the completion of the C Avenue East and North Third Street pavement rehabilitation project by Norris Asphalt. They've completed the C Avenue East and North Third Street pavement rehabilitation project. Scope included the milling, existing pavement, and asphalt overlay, concrete pavement reconstruction, full depth and partial depth concrete patching, repairing concrete curb and gutter sections, new ADA accessible sidewalk ramp reconstruction, sidewalk and driveway pavement replacement, and alley approach improvements. So the final contract amount was $726,825.73 after a net decrease of $38,539.27 from the original contract amount of $765,365 that was awarded at the September 3, 2013 city council meeting. By approving this action, city council will be accepting the project as complete. The retainage in the amount of $36,341.29 will only be released to the contractor 30 days after project acceptance if no claims are filed against the project. And the attached pay request for work on the project has been reviewed by staff and is recommended for payment. Staff is recommending accepting the completion of the project and approving the pay request number four and releasing the final retainage in 30 days. Do we have a motion supporting that?
Remove.
Okay? Discussion?
Real quick, just, I might know the answer. This is more to Mike. Mike, where we got the decrease, for example, of $38,000? Let me back up a little bit. The original cost of the project, we had that budgeted, correct? So now it's a decrease of $38,000. So that $38,000, that goes back to general fund or...
It would go back into the pavement preservation fund.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. Roll call.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
First Day? Yes. Walling?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item F. Considering a motion approving pay request number two. It's in the amount of $18,557.30 for work completed on the First Avenue East sidewalk project and by Stevens Concrete Limited. City of Oskaloosa has received pay request two from Stevens Concrete. Work completed through June 3 of 2014 on the First Avenue East sidewalk project. Staff reviewed the pay request, found it to be satisfactory for work completed on the project. It reflects work associated with concrete pavement, sidewalk, pavement markings, and electrical wiring for the light poles. Total cost of the project will be shared by the city and the property owners. All property owners have paid their share of the cost. Therefore, the staff is recommending council approve pay request two to Stevens Concrete Limited in the amount of $18,557.30. And there's a little bit of a breakdown in here as well. Do we have a motion for approval?
Remove.
Okay? Any discussion on this?
Just another quick note from Mayor and Council. The project is nearing completion, essentially done. There are a few items that will need to be redone within the project, so you'll see Stevens Concrete out there again, just touching up a few things, but everything else has looked good. That was a part of our inspection process, though.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Looks like the project looks pretty good. It's a lot better than it is.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
First Day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Takes us to item G. Consider a motion approving pay request number five, which is the final retainage in the amount of $7,903.27 to Norris Asphalt Paving. It's for the South Seventh Street pavement rehabilitation project. Norris Asphalt is requesting payment of the final retainage amount of $7,903.27, which comes up to 1.8% of the total contract amount for the South Seventh Street pavement rehabilitation project. Retainage was reduced from 5% to 1.8% because substantial work was completed by November 2013. The amount of $7,903.27 was retained to complete the reseeding of areas where growth was incomplete, and the reduced retainage is in compliance with Iowa code for substantial work completion. The pay request for work on this project has been reviewed by staff and is recommended for payment. Staff recommends approving the pay request to immediately release the final retainage because no claims have been filed against the project. Do we have a motion supporting that?
Removed.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Roll call.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
First Day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Item H. Consider a resolution to authorize the execution of an agreement for building inspection services. City of Oskaloosa has contracted with Safe Building Compliance and Technology, also known as Safe Building, in the past. Since the position for the building official is vacant, the city needs to hire an inspection service in order to assure compliance with adopted building codes. The proposed contract with Safe Building will require up to five days for plan reviews and up to 48 hours for inspection services. Presently, the Oskaloosa Municipal Code allows the building official to request 24 hours notice and for the inspection services. So therefore, the 48-hour notice for inspection services will be a deviation from code. The contract also does not hold Safe Building liable for these inspection services, and the city will be required to provide them legal representation. So from a budgetary standpoint, the building inspections would be paid out of the contractor services account with a budget of $16,000 for the fiscal year. That will need to be amended depending on how long the city will be using the services. The building inspection salaries account for full-time employee will also contribute towards those services. Do we have a motion supporting this?
Remove.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
It says we used it before. Is this the same group?
Yes. Yeah. Mayor and Council, I brought this... Previously, I executed the agreement on my own. I still would have done that, but given the considerable discussion that we've had in the past with this group, I wanted to at least let you know and the public know that we are, in fact, utilizing this group. We are now through a previous agreement. I think more importantly, though, is the specific item that says 48-hour notice. Code does say 24-hour notice. We have received some pushback even on the 24-hour notice, but we really would like to see it pushed to 48 hours. That way, the contractor could... We could be in compliance with contractor's request, for one. It would allow them additional time to review the necessary documents to issue permits, and I think it's their pledge to exceed, to beat that 48 hours. I think it's just something that they want to have in case they can't get to a particular project.
I think it's the same element. It's just like...
Did we have...
Something that they didn't like.
I think we've had some issues that have come up on different projects, but I also can say we've had issues on projects with our own staff, too.
We have.
It's in this type of a service, it's going to happen, unfortunately.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
First Day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.[1657.01]
Okay, any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
First day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Callagery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item I. Considering an ordinance amending chapter 15.04, the building code of Oskaloosa Municipal Code, and a request to waive the second and third readings of the ordinance, the proposed service agreement with Safe Building Compliance and Technology requires five days for plan reviews and 48-hour notice for inspection services. The Oskaloosa Municipal Code currently requires 24-hour notice for inspection services and therefore is not in compliance with the contract terms with Safe Building. Staff is requesting the City Council consider amending the Oskaloosa Municipal Code 15.04.470 to be amended to reflect the change from 24 hours to 48 hours as noted below. And then they go ahead and show the change in the wording. If the City Council supports this item, staff is requesting the second and third readings of the ordinance amendment be waived so the code complies with the agreement with Safety Building Compliance and Technology upon its execution. So do we have a motion on the ordinance amending? Let's hit that first.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, do we have a motion to waive the second and third readings?
Moved.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, let's have a roll call on the waiving of the rules.
First day?
Yes.
Walling?
No.
Yates?
Yes.
Callagery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
No, it doesn't.
Five, one.
It's got to have six.
It's got to have six. Okay. Okay, I stand corrected. It fails. And with that, the ordinance amending the code chapter 15.04. Roll call, please.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Callagery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
First day?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, moving on to item eight. Reports on items from city staff, city manager.
Mayor Council, as a result of that vote, I will have to send you an email and talk to our contractor about how we're going to work through that. So just an FYI.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So they'll say, the contract says they'll do it 48 hours. The code says they have to do it 24. So in essence, we either don't have a service to do it or we violate the code every time they don't do it 24.
Yes, sir.
Which we've been doing already. Right? We've been using them already, so the violation's been there.
But we don't have a new contract with them that says that it would require 48 hours. So I mean, they've been trying to work with us on that until this new contract could be put in place with the full expectation that it would be 48 hours. That's again to prevent, it's to help them with scheduling, it's to make sure that they're reviewing the documents that they need to. And quite frankly, we've looked around to see if there were other people who could do this or other companies and they're kind of a game in town. So we'll work through it and figure out how we're going to get through that item.
Well, the contractors will have to be somewhat patient in making sure their inspections are done as well. I know we, I've heard a lot of complaints about it in the past, and we'll continue under that 48-hour basis.
Yeah. The other item I have, Mayor, is a report on the YMCA and Edmondson Pool use, as you know, through the press release that was issued. The city and the YMCA are partnering on a temporary basis to utilize the city's pool during off-hours, more or less. There's a little bit of cross-programming that occurs in the evening, but a majority of their, the Y's programming occurs between 6:00 AM and 1:00 before the pool opens. I did receive an email from Don Collins this afternoon, and she said it seemed to go well. People who hadn't been to the pool before seem interested. So I think we're going to get some more feedback. I'm sure we'll hear good and bad, which is okay. I think that's what we want to know, what works well, what doesn't, and see if we can continue that partnership for the time being until they can understand what they're going to do to remedy the situation which caused them to close their pools.
So their pool is closed.
Their pool is closed. The other item I have for you is, I don't know, here is the South Eleventh Street project that previous meeting directed staff to move forward with putting together the plans and getting that project put together for you. You'll start to see progress on that in the next month or so. At the next council meeting, staff's going to request direction to get bids, to set a bid date. That'll be July 21st, and then the bid opening should be around the beginning of August, whether that be the first or the fourth. And at the council meeting on August 4th, we'll have the bid approval, assuming we receive bids. And then middle of August would be the start date, middle of August, the end of August. We could be in a situation where we see the underground utility work start first, much like what we did with C Avenue East, and that'll include some sewer repair work, moving of water valves, that type of infrastructure improvements. Then the contractor, depending on how far they get, they'll start the overlay process. So the hope is they'll get as far as they can, and if the weather gets bad, they'll pull off and they may have to come back and finish, just like they did with C Avenue East. But we're going to try to get as much of this done as we can. So that's the update on that. You'll start to see, like I mentioned, an item come to you next council meeting.
Anything from the city clerk?
No, sir.
Anything, city attorney, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to anything from city council members. Joe, how about we start with you?
Nothing.
Okay, your turn.
I have a request from somebody to look at our speed limit on 15th Avenue East. I think it's supposed to 25. This request would like to see it go up to 35.